Good evening, welcome to the July 1st, 2015 meeting of the Gatesburg Planning Commission. First up is the approval of our minutes from June 17th. Any questions on that?
No.
Is there a motion, please? I will note, I think Jerry, you were out for that.
I was.
Okay.
I feel abstained.
Is there a motion, please?
If I move that we approve the minutes from June 17th, 2015 meeting?
Second.
It's moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And there's one abstain.
Abstained.
Okay, so that's 401. Our agenda has record plats next, but I assume there are none tonight on those, right?
No plats tonight, sir.
Okay. Then we have one item on the consent agenda, and that's AFP-7041-2015. The Taggart Residence at Two Marquee Drive. Any questions on the consent agenda?
No.
Present the street. Is there a motion, please?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented to us this evening.
Second.
It's moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passees announcing, thank you. Next up are sign permits, and there is one of those, I guess. Sign-8748-2015 Starbucks Digital Order Screen at 505 Quince Orchard Road in the C2 General Commercial Zone. This is for an electronic sign approval, and presented from staff is Chris Berger. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. This electronic sign application comes before the Commission in accordance with Section 24-212I of the City Code, which states that electronic signs must be approved by the Planning Commission. The subject property is a Starbucks located at 505 Quince Orchard Road within the First Field Shopping Center. It is Zone Z2 General Commercial. The drive-through at the Starbucks currently has a pre-menu board, which is located here, a menu board, which is located here, a speaker post, which is located here, and a bollard. All are located to the building's northwest. The applicant proposes to remove the speaker post and replace it with a digital order screen, which is considered an electronic sign under City Code. The project will also include removal of the existing bollard and footer, installation of a new protective bollard, and installation of a new loop detector. The digital order screen will have an interactive feature that will allow the customer to speak to the barista. The screen will also feature a representative picture of the customer's order. So this is a representative photo of what it looked like. You have the barista on the top of the screen here, so it's kind of like a Skype where you can see what they look like and they can see what you look like. And then there's a representative photo of the food that you're ordering underneath. The digital order screen will measure 12.26 square feet. It will stand five foot, five inches above grade and include a post and footer. According to the applicant, the digital order screen will not be used for any advertising. The interactive feature of the digital order screen would not meet Section 24-212IA of the City Code that states the display must remain static for a minimum of six seconds. However, the barista's view from the digital order screen will only be activated when a vehicle is in front of the digital order screen, and the vehicle will block the public's view of the screen. Because the screen will have minimal impact on the public view, staff recommends that the applicant be exempt from Section 24-212IA. Also, Section 24-212IB states that no more than one sign with an electronic message display board is permitted per lot of record. And as I, as you saw before, there's two electronic signs that are already, the pre-menu board and the menu board. Staff is of the opinion that the two signs function as one, and the proposed digital order screen will operate in unison with the pre-menu board and the menu board as it replaces the existing speaker post. Staff does recommend the applicant provide a letter from the property owner prior to issuance of a permit that acknowledges that no more electronic signage will be allowed on the lot of record. Staff also recommends a condition that the applicant show compliance with Section 212ID through IF prior to final inspection of the signs installation. All other, the sign conforms to all of the requirements of Section 24-212I. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I just have one quick question. When you were mentioning that for two, what could be deemed as one, should that, and this is just a question to staff, should it be considered, should that be indicated in one of the conditions? Well, you said that the other sign, the other two signs-
Right.
-should be treated as one sign.
One of the conditions would be that the owner would need to provide notification that no more signs put-
I understand that.
Right.
But I'm just saying, that's a very specific thing that you're mentioning and that you pointed out in your approval or your recommendation for approval. So I'm just saying, should that be noted in the conditions in some way? I'm just asking that question.
Maybe it would be good to amend what's condition number two-
Right.
...and say, and include language about that.
Exactly. That's what I was thinking about.
As a report, it is part of the findings, but it certainly could be added as true to be suggested either way.
I just think we should re-call it out since it wasn't called out.
But it is in the record.
Sure.
Is this a trend that you're seeing or that beginning to see throughout the city at different facilities like this with drive-ins where there are multiple signs and they're having cameras now and two-way things, so on and so forth?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think it's a fast food place, because a lot of them are adding-
So is this something we're going to have to face then in the near future?
I don't know as much in the city, but I know that banks and credit unions have been doing it at their drive-throughs for some time. I don't know that those are necessarily classified as signs. They're part of the teller, you know, machine, but I think the interactive part in one form or another is probably something we'll see more of.
Is there something perhaps we should revisit as far as our own internal regs go with respect to these products coming online? To make this, because we've got, there are going to be a lot of fast food places coming-
Make a note of that in the discussion item, I did.
And that's what I was going to bring up then-
That would be something to talk about, I think, for the broader applicant.
Right. I mean, we may be looking at the sign provisions for other reasons such as Supreme Court decisions recently having some impact, so there may need to be updates anyway, and that would be very helpful to know.
Supreme Court addressed signs?
Yes.
Really?
Town of Gilbert decision is-
Can't wait to hear about that. Let's get that.
We want to hear about it.
Good point. There were so many other Supreme Court decisions in the news, that wouldn't be the main. All right. Any other questions?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that was here to comment on this application? Oh, Rob, please.
He likes Starbucks.
Thank you. Okay. So I guess you really made it through the recommendation already, is there?
I'd also like to add that in the staff report, condition one was that the applicant provide a property owner consent letter-
And that showed up, I guess.
...and they sent that after the report was posted, so that condition is no longer necessary.
So it's on three conditions then, as far as-
Correct.
Okay, so the discussion was around adding something to two about exempting or treating the existing menu board as a single menu board, even though it's sort of framed as if it's two menu panels, right? Is that what you want to add to it?
Yes.
So I would think it would be the first part of condition two, which is now condition one, but- and the electronic pre-menu board and the electronic menu board will consider that as one electronic display board.
Okay. Good. That's in the record now. We don't have to say it again, right? Excellent. Any other questions on the recommendation, concerns for the approval?
Just that, I think the presentation's still a little bit jumbled. I'm inclined to approve the application, but it's starting to become a little visually jumbled, and that's, could be an issue at a different property, could be an issue here if it continues. But it's starting to look a little disjointed, non-architectural, it's applied. So I'm just beginning to be concerned, but I think this application is approvable as submitted.
One quick question. The, two signs now, not three, but two signs. The way the flow, the traffic flow goes through that facility, will that cause any more additional problems of traffic flow? Because you've got one sign, you go through that process, then you see the other sign where you, then you order it. Is that, could that cause any additional traffic problems?
I don't think so, because the speaker post or the proposed digital order screen is going to be in the approximate location of the speaker post, so I think it'll just be the same as it is now.
And it's a drive aisle, too?
Yeah, I realize, but it is, it is a fairly intense or dense parking lot.
Very, very, yeah.
That was originally a bank driving.
Very tight.
If anything, I think it would tend to speed up the process. Business major. It would speed up the process, because they can order it, they can be preparing it while they're in line instead of waiting to get up and trying to talk to somebody.
I'm not a patron of a particular store, so I really don't know how that operation works, but I don't drink coffee. Go ahead. Okay, that's fine.
Any other questions, concerns?
For the record, I drink a lot of coffee.
We just wiped those on. Yeah, that was good insight, that explains a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
That's on the record now. All right. I think we're ready for a motion then, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission approve sign 8748-2015 Starbucks Digital Order Screen, finding it to be in conformance with Section 24-212 of the City Code, with the four conditions, including number two as amended in the record.
So just a clarification, we knocked out condition one because it was satisfied, so it's three conditions.
Okay, three conditions.
Second. It's moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passees announcing. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Wish the applicant good luck.
Yes.
Wherever they are. Next up is our site plan agenda, and that has a couple of types. First up is AFP-6204-2014 Criswell Automotive at 86 Bureau Drive, 5,154 square foot truck service building addition. This is in the C2 General Commercial Zone as amendment to final site plan. And presenting from staff is Caroline Seiden. Good evening.
Good evening. Just to orient you to the site first, this is part of the Criswell Automotive land bounded by I-270, which is to the north, Bureau Drive. First Field Road is to the south, and Quince Orchard Road to the west. And the subject of the application is a, in this smaller photograph on the bottom, is a addition to what's currently a parts storage building and will, is requested to be a truck service center when it's completed, an addition of 5,154 square feet for a truck service center. And Steve Crum from McCree's Hendrickson Glasscock is here to present.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. For the record, I'm Steve Crum with McCree's Hendrickson Glasscock with offices in Montgomery Village. We're here on behalf of the applicant this evening. You saw this site plan in a previous life when it was going to be a Fiat dealership and Fiat repair facility, and that never went forward and was never constructed. So what you're seeing in the rendering in the brighter red color is the addition, and the tan color buildings are what's existing today. So very little, from a site plan standpoint, changed. The building is, won't be two stories now. It will be a high bay for truck servicing, and as indicated, it is an addition of 2,535 square feet. Sorry, that's the existing building. The addition is 4,954 square feet with associated utilities predominantly water and sewer connections. The disturbed area associated with the construction is going to be about 11,000 square feet. This site is considered a redevelopment project from the standpoint of stormwater management, and stormwater management will be addressed with three dry wells taking the roof water and infiltrating it into the ground. There is no forest on the site, and no forest conservation easements are impacted by this development. Traffic impact statement was submitted to the city and was found that didn't rise to the level that would require traffic study. Obviously, there are no residential units involved. WSSC plans have been submitted. They're not yet approved for the new water and sewer connections, but they will comply with all the requirements of WSSC. And at this time, we didn't have a signage package, so the applicant will return to present a signage package.
Just out of curiosity, what does that mean exactly? If it's a service bay, is it just adding that to it, or are you adding more about the lot itself, like to be seen from a distance?
We're just adding service base.
Like signage for the service base and stuff?
Yeah, it would probably be incidental signage to indicate, you know, bay one, bay two, bay three.
But the proposal wouldn't be to add, it actually faces the railroad tracks. I'm not sure what visibility you have, but I didn't know whether there was some sort of a view that you were trying to do Criswell signage on for a distance.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Again, that has to come back before you, so. I would like to point out, there is one typographical error in the building data table on the site plan. Under the addition, building data table, the building total is 7,702 square feet, not 7,602 square feet. The applicant is in agreement with all the conditions that were presented in the staff report. And if you have any questions, I'm here and the architect, I believe, is here as well.
Okay. Just for anybody that's looking at it, were you going to show the elevations of where the packet?
Yeah.
Okay.
So to the left of the front elevation or south elevation are the new bays that they have, looks like glass in the overhead doors, and to the right is the existing building that does have overhead doors in it. And the large gray feature, I would defer to the architect as to what that represents.
On up. Sure. There's an extra chair just for you there.
Good evening. My name is Tom Flanagan with Flanagan Architects. The building materials on all the elevations are consistent with the building materials or for the other buildings that are on the site as well. The gray tower you see in the middle picks up on the cement fiber panels on the Fiat dealership facade, and the metal panels that are to the left of that and then wrap the sides of the building, makes a Chevrolet building as well. The rest is concrete, maybe even it's painted, clear end of eyes aluminum on the overhead doors with full vision glass.
Any additional site lighting coming along with this?
We had to move several of the existing site lights to, as the parking lot was reconfigured. If there is any lighting, it may be on the building and would come back with the sign package.
The lighting will come back?
The lighting, I think we moved a pole or two that were in the way of access, but relocation of the same fixtures that are out there.
The same basic covers that you have now.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Straightforward.
It is. So Caroline, just to kind of qualify or clarify some of the conditions and what's happening out there. The displaced parking is okay. I mean, that's in the calculation for lot storage, probably, it's not even really-
Right. Well, typically with any car dealer, they have so many more spaces than are required because they're all for storage, so it's sort of a semantics issue when you take some away.
What is behind the illegally marked parking spaces? What is that condition?
There are, in the, when you look at an aerial, I don't know if, the aerial is a little far away to maybe see it on the one that I showed before, but when you look at an aerial of the dealership there in the fire lane, there are some spaces marked kind of in the fire lane that are not on any site plan-
Oh, I see.
...and should not be there. So we wanted to take the opportunity with this review to ask them to remove those spaces.
Sure. Makes sense.
So the site plan now is correct?
The site plan was, yeah, is correct, and past site plans were correct. They just added some extra spaces.
Okay. Anything else? Is there anyone here to speak on this application or question? Okay. So Caroline, if you do the recommendation, please.
Sure. Staff recommends to grant AFP-6204-2014 Criswell Automotive at 86 Bureau Drive amendment to final plan approval, finding it in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-172A with the four conditions as shown in the staff report.
All right. Very good. Any questions about the recommendation?
No.
Concerns for approval?
Nope.
All right. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant AFP-6204-2014 amendment to final plan approval, finding it in compliance with Section 24-170 and 24-172A with the four conditions as written to the record.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That passes you down. Thanks very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next up is AFP-7027-2015 MI Homes Final Architecture on Kepler Drive in Crown Neighborhood 2. This is an MXD zone, and it's amendment to final plan. And presenting from staff is Rob Robinson. Good evening, Rob.
Good evening, Commissioners. The applicant, MI Homes, has submitted an amendment to final site plan application, AFP-7027-2015, requesting approval for final architectural townhome elevations and sightings using new designs and landscaping within Neighborhood 2 Phase 2 of the Crown Development. The subject 19 lots were approved as part of applications SP-11-0011 and SP-11-0018. The current application, as you can see on the screen now, basically divides all the lots front on Kepler Drive and divides the lots into four townhome sticks. This is Block K, and this is Block B. And as we mentioned with Kepler, this is a right-in, right-out from Fields Road and leads into Crown Park Avenue, which is the major spine road connecting Neighborhood 1 all the way across eventually to the City Park/City School site. Presenting this evening for the applicant, on behalf of the applicant, is Ms. Sarah Durkin from KTGY Group. And with that, I will hand it over to Sarah.
Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission. As Rob said, my name is Sarah Durkin, and I'm here from KTGY Architects, and we are representing the applicant, MI Homes, in this request for approval of architectural townhome elevations for 19 lots in Crown Farm Neighborhood 2. There are 10 lots along Block K, representing our transitional collection, and nine lots at Block B, which is our urban collection. As you can, no, you can leave it, sorry. As you can see from the site plan, our 19 lots are divided into four building sticks, two on each side, both fronting to Kepler Drive. This is a very unique location, as the lots are situated between the more traditional Neighborhood 2 to the right and the urban town center to the left. Our intention for these elevations is to create a smooth transition between the urban center to the semi-urban community. Our architectural vision for these two new collections seen here is to seamlessly integrate the urban fabric into the residential community by utilizing a combination of both contemporary and traditional elements. Our design encapsulates the journey from the commercial space to the residential without diminishing the look and feel of the existing community. So, beginning here with the 10 transitional townhomes sighted along Block K, the image on the bottom right is of the existing MI Homes product currently located in Neighborhood 2. The image on the bottom left is the nearby approved elevations by Pulte Homes. In our proposed elevations above, there is a play off of the two color palettes using a brighter red brick with orange tones and rich bold burgundy brick. The intention of the transitional elevations is to bridge the gap between these two styles, creating an architecture that is harmonious with other builders, yet unique in its own right. So in order to bridge this gap, we have introduced urban elements in contrast with simplified traditional detailing. Contemporary features such as flat roofs and outdoor front and rear terrace, metal awnings, and dark metal railings augment traditional elements of exaggerated brick banding and trim detailing, such as the more pronounced cornice with stacked trim bands, brackets, dentil blocks, and corbeled bricks to give the cornice substantial depth and to really highlight the top of the front terrace wall. Sorry. We believe that this design complements both the approved construction and the existing neighborhood, and really creates a focal point between the urban and semi-urban areas. So moving to the nine urban units, which are sighted along Block B and border both commercial and residential spaces, the image in the bottom right is Pulte's approved contemporary elevations, which will eventually front the public park from the opposite side of Crown Park Avenue. As you can see from the site plan, MI's urban townhomes will back to the park across Alcott Place. The intent of this product is to bridge as seamlessly as possible from the retail and multifamily to the transitional and more traditional units further within the neighborhood. Our urban elevations are defined by the juxtaposition of materials, the push and pull of masses, and punched openings, which all embody a simple yet elegant appearance. The urban feel is reinforced with flat roofs, terraces on the front and rear, aluminum-framed windows with moments of clear uninterrupted glass, metal awnings above exterior doors, dark metal railings, and very minimal trim detailing. On select corner units, cantilevered corner bays wrap around to the side elevation, articulating the side massing facing the street. The horizontal metal siding on the bays provides a variation in texture and creates a play on both light and material. So since the rears of the units are highly visible from the urban park, our biggest challenge in this project was to ensure that the rear elevations maintained a superior visual aesthetic. To meet this challenge, we have continued elements from the front elevations to the rear, such as the full brick facade. The horizontal elements, such as the cantilever decks, metal awnings, and the step-back of the terrace, all help to articulate the rear facade. The outdoor terrace not only gives residents an exceptional view of the public park, but also activates the pedestrian experience from below. This creates a strong sense of place along the fringe of downtown. A sense of symmetry and rhythm are carried through in both the transitional and urban streetscapes. Notice the corner bays, which wrap around the ends of both buildings, anchoring the corners and defining each block. The similarities in both massing and structure provide continuity on both sides of Kepler, which we believe really tie these two collections together. So we are excited about this opportunity to present these fresh new collections here tonight, which we believe will embellish the existing community and really bring a distinct feel to the Crown Farm Neighborhood. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I don't remember which, well, actually this elevation would be the one you have up. The fourth floor, that sort of penthouse element you show, is that an option or do all the units have that?
All the units have that.
They have that, so that's built out.
Yeah.
And is it a roof terrace? There's outdoor space there, outdoor terrace space?
There's a loft in the middle, and there's a terrace on the front, front and the rear.
Okay, great. And then your remarks about the rear elevations as they face the urban park, where are things like air conditioning compressors, meters? Where will all that be located for those units?
The air conditioning units, I'm going to jump in. Once again, were dictated by the design guidelines. So they're going to go in the median islands between the parking. And if you look at me, see if I can find the site plan for you more quickly. So essentially, it's mandated that they will go here. If, the Commission may notice, one of the conditions was for final signature set elevations, obviously, we want to see where the meter locations are and exhaust. But as throughout Crown, again, usually it's two smaller air conditioning units stationed right on this island setback.
I know the guidelines point that way, and I think for a vast majority of the homes that are being built here, that makes perfect sense, because the alley or the views or whatever they're in, being called here, they are legitimately out back, but this one little row right here fronts the park. So just a, just sort of a curiosity that you brought up, that, how it fronts the park. So between that and the size of the garage door, you know, it almost begs the question, should you do two individual ones? But you're saying the guidelines are, they've complied with the guidelines, so there really no, no problems with that, but-
Because I believe in here is the requirement based upon the design guidelines.
No, no, I understand that, but just that one particular row on the plan that's basically wide open.
In this area?
Yeah. Let's see. Yeah, what, 37, 38, 39, 40? Just something to consider. We can get into it in discussion, but the point is that would still be configured with all that stuff out back by the, or out by the robbers, right? Okay.
And units will assign?
I'm sorry, do we, do we?
Let's get into this discussion. Any other questions?
No, we'll get into discussion.
Okay. Questions?
No.
All right. Has anyone here commenting on this application? I guess not. Okay. Rob, you want to do the recommendation, please?
Sure. Staff recommends to grant AFP-7027-2015 Crown Neighborhood 2 MI Homes Townhome Architecture, Kepler Drive amendment to final plan approval, finding it in conformance with Sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the City zoning ordinance with the three conditions as presented in the staff analysis.
Thank you. I like where these are headed, the more modern approach and the wraparound. I mean, I think it's really exciting to see something-
Fun. These are funky.
Yeah. It's nice. But I do, I do think we've spent at least a couple of minutes talking about maybe some things on those rear elevations that could be done to make them less like- be done to make them less like rear elevations. I totally understand they comply with the guidelines, but this is a very odd sort of alignment where it backs up to the park. Anyway, any other comments or questions?
We'll get to that discussion.
Well, go ahead, we're in discussion.
Well, you've got the four unit, the four stick units, it looks like, and you'd have conceivably put the HVAC on either side of those units, the end units, and then just have two units in the middle having that HVAC. That would eliminate at least some of that.
Yeah, property line might be an issue, though.
I don't know.
So, is the commission suggesting for lot thirty-seven would be on this side, then?
What does that have to do with it?
I mean, this is the stick of four with the rear, so it's just trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can definitely go on the sides for this. That would work.
That would work.
For thirty-seven and forty?
For thirty-seven and forty, yeah.
Well, I don't know. Do the, do the site plan, because I think the other problem in trying to do that is you've got one end also facing the street.
Yes, forty. So, this is, and you can actually see the placement of the HVAC material. So, this is where it's going to go on the actual site plan. So, they're going to be pairing up, so it's on the three islands.
So, the representative plan is green, obviously, in your rendered plan. I know it's narrow. I know we're, we're expecting a lot from our drivers to not drive over that median, but I would think that some landscaping there would be a great amenity, at least in that, in that four stick.
Yeah.
Thirty-seven to forty. But I, I think the other is important, too. It's going to be quite a bit of traffic that comes up into that garage entry. You know, it will be a seen sort of threshold for the city. There's certainly, there's a retailer on that corner who will have that raised, you know, platform wraparound seating area. So, you're going to be sitting there eating your lunch. And I'm not saying that the back of the townhouse is the ugliest thing we've ever put up against a restaurant, but I think there's a little bit of opportunity, at least there, for something in that median, in that small island.
Rob, can you flip up the one that was more the illustrated side? It was out a little bit farther, showing a little bit more of the context than that last one. That's the one. So, Matt, same again, which we're talking about with the...
The little islands that protrude from, you know, between thirty-seven, thirty-eight and thirty-eight, thirty-nine, thirty-nine, forty. Those little islands contain, you know, at least maybe, maybe less than two for a couple of the units, but at least one, maybe two units. There's, if you put a nice hardy low bush behind them towards the, towards the park, and still maybe didn't plant all the way to the end of that curb, you know, so you gave them a turning chance to get in the driveway without running over a bush. But if you, if you said, you know, four, five, six feet at most is what a driver would need to make that mistake, turning into that drive, then from there back, you probably have another four feet of area to plant, right, before you hit a condenser. My nap didn't matter.
So, going to the landscape plan, I mean, I think this will be somewhat easier. So, is this suggestion here, you know, basically from where this line is to where the condensers go, filling in this, because we can easily add a condition to, you know, further amend the landscape plan?
That's right. That's...
Are these, are these the type that also have the deck that's, that's hanging over part of the driveway, or?
There is a cantilever.
It's cantilever, it's not a column coming down.
It's only four, four feet, though.
It's four feet?
But it's cantilever, there isn't a column that are posted coming down there, right?
No.
But that's good. It gives that facade a little shadow. It gives it some, that's a good thing to have. I think it's great.
Would it be possible to put the HVAC on the cantilever, on the, the deck itself or somewhere out there?
I would recommend against that, because it's taking away one of the assets there. And then, actually, it makes the, the HVAC unit even more visible from the park, because you've now raised it up.
Yeah, I wouldn't give it a platform. But, but also, I think that's a pretty valuable couple of square feet on that kind of patio.
I think, I think this perspective gives you the best look for lot forty. So, this is the cantilever, obviously, the overhang. And to the commission's question earlier, this is where you see the two different terraces.
Yeah, the terrace alone and then the corner unit that, on the thirty-two and the forty that actually, you know, cantilevers and turns with that aluminum window, and it's just, that's really great. And I think that's the main piece that activates this spec. It's really great.
The only other detail I would, I would just sort of question is, is a single large garage door as opposed to two small ones with that sort of visibility?
I thought we had one large. Do we have two small or one large?
One large. Yeah.
So, the elevation is a whole...
What's that? Wouldn't that change the whole architecture?
Well, as a, as, if you look at some of the front-loaded garage models we've approved in other parts of this, this project or other projects, very often the front-loaded garages get single, you know, one, two singles, because it breaks down the scale, and it doesn't leave quite a gaping hole when it's open, and visibility of all the storage and things from a, from a public park. So, it's a, it's a thought. I don't know if it's a good idea, but it's something I'm looking at.
It wouldn't fit on these lots to break it up like that.
So, it's not really a two-car garage, anyway?
It's an SUV garage.
A very small car.
It's a large SUV garage.
It's like mine, it's a one-and-a-half car garage.
All right. Any other questions, concerns?
No.
Well, it is nice to see this going. I think the, the rear deck's like that shadow line, like you said, Matt. And if you pull, pull the compressors back as close to the building as possible, and then add some landscaping, then at least you won't run over when you come up the first, the first part of the turning radius. That'll all add, I think, to helping that.
Am I hearing that we are going to add a fourth condition to mandate the landscaping, because I just soon have some language read into the record after that?
I would advocate for that.
Absolutely.
Fellow commissioners.
How would you word that?
Applicant to work with staff to amend the proposed landscape plan to show additional plantings in the parking driveway medians.
Excellent.
Curious, the, the windows on these products, are, do they open? And how do they?
There are some that are operable. They're cased in windows.
I'm sorry, the case of windows, okay.
And we've indicated, like, for example, this is a fixed window, and we're showing the swing.
Okay.
So, we've shown, we've indicated which windows are operable on all the renderings.
Okay. Most of the time on the front elevation, there were a couple that were fixed, I guess on the...
The front doors?
Well, you can see on the front elevation.
Yeah. In the triple windows, the center is, is fixed, and the, the sides are operable.
You can see that. You see the swing here?
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah. Okay.
On the smallest answer of all possibilities. And the front door opens.
Shinnied up that deck, you know?
Yeah. Condition number five. All right. Nice work on the modern architecture. Let's see more of that in the city.
Yeah, these are really nice.
Yeah.
They're really nice.
Very nice.
To, to challenge staff, obviously, I think we've had this discussion before, you know, this kind of variegation in architectural typologies, you know, is, is a great thing. That sort of dependence we have on that mid-Atlantic colonial contextualism is, it gets a little bit obsessive, if not addictive.
Especially on the rear, this brick instead of siding, all the same color.
Right.
So, even just a little change has got us all excited, so.
So, I'm going to say I don't want to see that for Neighborhood Three.
And big, it's not an aesthetic issue for me as much as it is just a market, you know, appreciation to sit, presenting the market as a city, some differentiation between neighborhoods, between streets, between products that they can, they can buy, rent, whatever.
Yes, indeed.
Homogenous markets is going to keep us into the future.
Mid-Atlantic colonial contextualism. You know, write an article about that. All right, any other comments, questions? Okay, I think we've got the proposal to put a fourth condition in, the landscape, and you have that in the record, right? Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant AFP 7027-2015 amendment to final plan approval finding in conformance with sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the city zoning ordinance with the four conditions as read into the record.
Second.
It's moved in second. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Good luck.
Your luck.
Looking good. That takes us to our discussion agenda. It looks like annual planning report is the topic this evening. Marty, are you heading that up, or?
Mr. Chair, I am. This is our annual planning report worksheet, and you will be seeing our annual report that will look much better than the worksheet. This is, this is satisfying state requirements, and it's just the bare bones information we have.
It was disappointing when I opened it.
We have one coming back to you that'll have graphics, and we'll, we'll look nice. But this is, this is what we turn into the state, and we wanted to give you guys a chance to look at it. So, if you have questions, Kurt did the, the, the main part of the work on this, and he's here to answer them, and I'm here to take credit for it.
It was funny, it was interesting. I actually read down through it in like section six or something. There was a remark that Gaithersburg has no agricultural land. I think that was kind of sad, because we've had farms in the city limit up until just a few years ago.
Yeah.
Used to be called a friendly farm-hung community.
Did it really farm-ho?
Back in the day.
Friendly farm-ho.
Wow.
We do have chickens.
Yes.
I understand.
A few times.
So, what's the schedule on this as far as the production? I mean, how, what's the plan over the next three, four, or five months? How's this work?
Before you'll see a prettied-up one, what, Kurt?
I'm sorry, I had to bring you up.
Hi, Kurt. Good to see you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, we hope to get it, you know, finished as soon as possible. I don't know that we'll get back by August, since there's only one meeting in August. Certainly by September, we would definitely want to come back with it. We also don't want to let it sit on our plate for too long, so.
You have a deadline with the state to do this, this version, right?
Correct. The worksheet is supposed to be reviewed by the commission and then, I guess somehow approved or at least okayed by the commission. And then, once that's done, we can obviously send that to the state immediately, but, and we probably will. But we will send them a copy of the final report as well, which will have the graphics in the text.
Excellent. Thanks for that work.
Sure.
I know it's probably not the most glamorous part of the job.
Thank you.
Anything else on that, how it worked? Good. All right, so that takes us to, from the commission. Jerry, can I start down with you, please?
I'm just wishing everybody a happy Fourth of July, and consider yourself blessed because you were born in the USA.
Okay.
Weren't you?
I wasn't. A lot of people weren't.
But that's it.
All right, great, thanks. Matt?
Nothing for me.
Nothing.
Danny?
Well, just a little something. Last Wednesday was, was a horrible day. Wednesday evening was, was horrible. And, and while we live in the great community of Gaithersburg, I'm happy that nothing like that has ever happened here, but we can't, you know, think that it can't ever happen, and we just need to be mindful of those kinds of things. Everybody knows what I'm talking about.
It's Thursday, then?
No, it was Wednesday.
Bible study.
It was Wednesday.
Okay.
So, I'm glad we live where we do, but we have to really feel for those who don't enjoy the freedoms that we enjoy here, and be mindful that everyone should enjoy those things.
And I think there are some, you know, not to take away from the personal tragedy of it, but there are some actual planning and, and, you know, and good urban design issues that come along with that, too, in terms of security.
Yeah.
And presenting a welcoming public face for our public buildings, but still having some ability to control the message that those buildings are sending.
Right.
There's planning issues.
That's it.
Good point, Danny. Thanks very much. So, carrying forward a point that came up during one of our applications, I think maybe to, to open up a discussion on our sign ordinance, I, I don't know how many more of these digital ordering signs are going to come up, or to what extent even menu boards need to be thought about as signage. I mean, I think, I was a little surprised to see it come in as a sign application, but I get it. There was really nowhere else to put it in terms of what we have for ordinances and regulations. But there's probably a fine line, too, where those get big enough and get bright enough that they become a sign, because frankly, even this one, you can see from Quinns Orchard Road, you know, if you're driving by. So, with the careful graphics, it could turn into sort of a secondary sign, I guess. But maybe, maybe in the course of the next few months, to dive into the sign manual and see if it deserves a second or it deserves another section or subsection, or at least reference to things like some of the technology that's emerging for interaction. I guess, I guess it happens, too, at gas stations. They put little TVs on the gas pumps, you know, that little entertainment newsy thing. There's menu boards. There's, like you said, the banks are doing drive-through technology now that's a little bit more digital. So, anyway, maybe something we can, we can poke into a bit more.
And to that point, I was just thinking when I was reading that, that, the, the one that was called out, I forget what the number was, but it said it, it was less than six seconds or, or something like that. And that, was that for like, kind of those signs that, that scroll across? That's what that was to take care of, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, it does look like we may have to kind of look at something.
Well, and you know, it gets to the point where LED TVs at seventy-nine inches are not all that expensive anymore. And you can imagine hanging a bunch of those in a window or something and develop, you know, delivering messaging after hours. I don't know, it just, there's, there's something, there's something there we might want to start looking at.
Just think of Marilyn Live, like.
Yeah, I think we've, I think we've, we've seen, not, not in the city just yet, but we've seen across some local jurisdictions, there's a real problem or disconnect, you know, when we talk about signage, we talk about all the things in our signage article, you know, that purpose and findings, which is all about aesthetics, you know, business environment, you know, all these, these A through H issues are really kind of aesthetic integration issues, right, visual integration issues. And when we have a sign, we say, okay, just like the sign that's ten feet away from this, this new digital display that we approved tonight, it, it was architecturally integrated into a larger piece. It's not a, it's not a square board with a piece of text on it. It's a sign. It has a, it has a, you know, edge to it, has a little bit of design to it. It, you know, pretty or not, it, it's designed. And there's an inclination, when there's a digital board, to just put up the digital board. And part of that's just because we're not used to dealing with them, I think. We're not used to putting them inside of something architectural or inside of a sign frame or into something that's been designed, that somebody, you know, spent more than two minutes thinking about, you know, and can, can put it into something that's architectural. And I think there's a real risk there that you end up with like three different, you know, digital displays that are just different sizes, because it was the first thing on the order form, and they just stick it on a pole and they stick it right there, rather than, you know, integrating it into a brick archway, you know, integrating it into a larger metal sign of some sort, you know, actually designing it into wherever the, the thing is.
So, in the old days, where would a, a static menu board for a drive-through fall in terms of permitting or approvals or?
We really didn't consider it a sign, because it was sort of part of the business. So, we really...
Regardless of how large it is, it would just be?
Yeah. I mean, if you look at any of the McDonald's or, or any of the drive-throughs, fast food restaurants, we consider it part of the function of the, of the use, and we, they, they did have to get a sign permit, but we didn't count it towards their total
It was in Alexandria just last week, trying to describe that. My, my analogy was, you know, you wouldn't say, I need a light at this corner of the building, and so I'm going to put a, you know, a galvanized steel pipe with a light bulb on the end of it, you know, unless it was really, that's cool. But, but, you know, that, that wouldn't be your solution with the simplest possible way to put light on that corner. You would say, well, why isn't there a fixture? Why isn't it, you know, angled down to be where, you know, where they want the light to go? Why doesn't it design, why doesn't it have a nice post? Why doesn't it have a nice cap? You know, you wouldn't, you would knee-jerk that. But for some reason, these little screens, we just say, well, it's a screen. If the screen already has a frame on it, let's just ignore it. And it's, it's really any, like any other piece of, you know, maybe it's not a sign, maybe it's more like a piece of the architecture or something, but.
Well, and you brought up, or someone brought up during this, the application we're talking about, where the sign ordinance also considered distraction and, and sort of competition for, for safe visibility on a road, and trying to decide how bright and how tall things would be. You can imagine these things now dotting the edge of a, of a strip center with either advertising or interactive, after-hours interactive use, whatever it might be. And that could ultimately become a streetscape unto itself or a distraction on the streetscape.
Yeah, I mean, our basic purpose and findings, A through H, are very clear about, you know, promoting natural beauty of the city in a manner that protects property values and creates a more attractive environment, economic and business. Maintain and enhance the aesthetic environment by reducing visual clutter, unduly restricting the city's ability to attract source of economic development and growth is not, you know, we're looking for that, but we're not looking for something that creates visual clutter or brings down the overall aesthetic continuity, you know, the natural beauty of the city. I'm not sure what that's been.
Mr. Chair, I think this is a great discussion and very timely, as was mentioned by our assistant city attorney. We recently had a Supreme Court decision that came out that it really has some broad, far-reaching implications on sign codes throughout the nation. This is relative to basically what we can regulate as far as types of signs and what they say and how long they can be up, those types of things. And so, we have already begun, Frank's already started looking at the sign code. And, so we have already begun, Frank's already started looking at the sign code for inconsistencies with that Supreme Court ruling. In doing so, Trudy and I have already identified a bunch of things that we don't have definitions for, that we'd like to fix, that have been problems in the past, so this discussion is, is very timely. What I'm assuming that you will see is probably, we will do some work on it from a staff perspective, and then, if you want to have a work session or something, probably later in the fall.
Yeah.
And, and that might be a, a really good kind of winter project to take on. The sign code, having done a few of them in different areas, they can become a huge project.
It's excruciating.
And, and it's, it's amazing who, who is concerned about these things. So, from, from that perspective, I think we'll want to make sure that we're targeting things that, you know, really, classifying them maybe is better than targeting, as, as far as what we need to fix to comply with the law, and then areas that we, we think could be, you know, bettered or cleaned up.
Frank, can you point us to an article or a summary of what, what that decision was all about, and what, what it addressed?
Sure, the main, the main thing, I mean, we had a fairly busy Supreme Court the last couple of weeks, and not, usually there are one or two decisions that affect local government. Sometimes there'll be a, a police decision that affects us, because we do have a police force, but the sign ordinance, the, it's somewhat of a surprise, but the, the decision very clearly, and it was nine to nothing, it was not one of those five to four decisions, nine to nothing in terms of the outcome, the majority opinion had six joining in with the analysis. What it basically said was, if you have categories, that is, if you define, you know, certain rules for certain types of signs, or for certain, as you would define a category, if you, that therefore is considered content-based, and it doesn't say it's absolutely invalidated, what it means is, they apply what's known as strict scrutiny. That means you have to have a compelling, what they refer to as state interest or local interest, and it has to be the least restrictive way of achieving that. What that effectively means is, it's invalidated, because strict scrutiny is a very, very hard test to meet, and particularly under the, in the context of the First Amendment. Now, the decision did not necessarily go after physical restrictions, they just have to be more generally applied, in other words, size, whether off-site or allowed, or how much is allowed per building, much of which we already have. The problem comes down to categorizing them, particularly focusing on religious uses, community service, or what have you, and that's what, what we'll need to go through. It's not clear that, the wording of the decision did not necessarily say that signs based on events, such as an election, are invalidated, at least by this decision. Now, there are other decisions, both in Maryland and other relevant areas, that raise questions about any election signs that have time limitations, but...
And I believe we took care of that when that came out.
Yeah, we, we, our, our ordinance seems to be in compliance with that. Many, many, many other local ordinances in Maryland are not, and they simply take the approach of, well, we're not, we're not able to enforce it. And many follow, many persons follow it, anyway. But number of commercial limits, for instance, real estate signs, there are certain limits and allowances there, construction, we have a category for that. It's not clear those are necessarily impacted, partly because those categories are fairly generous and fairly broad, are fairly distinctly oriented to the specific commercial need in question. We have heard from other municipalities that possibly for ordinances which are much more restrictive, in terms of commercial, that that raises a question, but, but I'm not sure, I mean, that's something we'll take a look at, but it doesn't necessarily mean that those different types of categories are out the window. Also, the distinction between residential and commercial, in terms of fairly limited what's allowed in a residential area, it looks like that's probably not affected, and that would be okay. Again, the main thrust is, our ordinance does have certain categories, that's where there would be a problem, and there are other municipal ordinances that go into even more categories, and those are going to have to be redone, so.
So we'll dive into that late fall, or when the staff can work that into the work plan, I guess.
I'm forwarding you all right now a really good article that was done by one of the Arizona papers that was, following this real closely, it gives a really good synopsis, but the APA and others, you know, all you'd have to do is Google Newtown and Gilbert Supreme Court decision, and, and you'd be able to come up with it, but this article will give you the...
Great. So make the two progress, we, we look at what the legal implications are that are now kind of emerging, and then maybe the side of the technology is beginning to put some new pressures on what we consider signs, or what we should consider signs.
And there may even be some definitions to make sure, to some extent, we're covering the issue, and yet have rules that work.
Yeah.
I'm not even positive that it falls under the sign ordinance, it may fall under the architectural elements, you know, of a project, and so there may be another way to deal with it.
Okay.
I did have one question on the agenda, just to make sure, is Cliff satisfied that you did get Planning Commission approval of the worksheet, because that's what we have to submit, you're, we're all satisfied that that, that was what you needed? I believe at least the sense of consensus is...
Right, right, I mean, I guess the old adage that, you know, if there's no squeaky wheel, there's no problem.
I just want to make sure our record...
That's a good point.
I think the question on the record is, as presented, is there any issues with staff submitting that, that questionnaire, that answer to the state? Okay, very good.
I just want to make sure.
We'll be more, we'll be more critical of the pretty version. Thank you. All right, what is it, where are we now? I guess more from staff. Anything else?
Well, we have some meetings coming up.
Yep, it's a busy summer.
It is a busy summer. Next Monday, the, July 6th, the Planning Commission will be part of two joint public hearings, one on the adequate public facilities ordinance concerning schools, and the other one is the allowance, or the ordinance is proposing to allow light manufacturing in the MXD zone. Then, our next Planning Commission meeting is July 15th, and then on July 20th, we have two joint public hearings. One is the schematic development plan for a parking garage at Metamute, and then a text amendment on the MXD and CD amendment process that we've discussed earlier.
Good.
And then we have a tentative public hearing scheduled for August 3rd.
And we'll have just the one commission meeting in August?
That is what is proposed on August 5th.
Is there something on August 10th, and I had a note here for August 31st?
There is a tentative joint work session on adequate public facilities ordinance on Monday, August 10th.
Okay, it's tentative, okay.
Yes, well, that, yeah, that's tentative.
And, and what about August 31st? I also had something on, on the BRT, I think.
It's something tentative, but we don't know if it's joint or not.
Okay. Okay. Excellent. Anything else, from anybody, anyone, also?
The August, sorry, Trudy, I'm just looking at my notes, the August 31st meeting is, is just a council work session, it's not a joint, but it is, our consultants for the 355 BRT will be presenting the findings from that study, and then we also will have a presentation by the state on the CCT update, so, both of which might be of interest, and you're, you're more than welcome to attend, so.
All right, bring it. Does that, does that do it?
Yes.
All right, have a good evening, we're adjourned.
Thank you.